If we could have council members come to the dais, please. Grab a hat. I'd like to call to order the council meeting of May 20.
Councilmember Dunbar, councilmember Garza, councilmember Hussein, councilmember Jackson, councilmember Spatafor, councilmember Spitzley.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Councilmember Washington. Councilmember what?
Here.
There are seven members present at forum. Uh... Dunbar is absent.
Thank you. If we could continue to remember councilmember Dunbar and our prayers and thoughts today was her mother's funeral, and those of us who have lost a parent understand the things that she's going through right now, so we would appreciate your thoughts and prayers for councilmember Dunbar. With that, if we could rise for a moment of meditation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your mother, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have, for your approval, the council proceedings of May 13.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the approval of the printed council proceedings from May 13, 2019.
We have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
We are to special ceremonies. We have a mayoral presentation in recognition of the Memorial Day Planning Committee and volunteers.
If we could have the Memorial Day Planning Committee and volunteers come forward, and the mayor has a presentation. Yes, you may. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. Well, we wanted to thank everybody here. We have some certificates to be presented in appreciation for your generous donation of your time and talent and your plan to stage the 2019 Memorial Day Ceremony, which will be Saturday, May 25 at noon. The Evergreen Cemetery is Little Arlington, which it has been for many years. So, thank you for helping Lansing honor and remember those who have served us and who have fallen protect our liberty and security. I'm gonna call out your names. I think you're all here, and if you could come forward, and I'm gonna give you the certificate of appreciation. I also want to recognize Martha Fuchita, who is in the audience, who does all of our veterans-related activities, and thank her as we're getting our commission up and running, and I know she was very much a part of this. So, first Chaplain James Green and family. I know it's not you, but you've got kinda everybody helping out. Thank you very much for... Wanda Swenson. Very much. John Thomas. And then we have Hugh McNichol and the Lansing Kiwanis Club. I see you got the shirt on. Again, I hope everybody will join us for the celebration. It's always wonderful. The cemetery always looks great, and I know I will be laying a wreath, and I think there are several others. Both Martha and Loretta would probably know just as well as I do, but it's always a very somber, but a nice celebration, and we hope to have as many people there as we can, but we couldn't do it without the wonderful folks behind me. Does anybody wanna say anything? This is your five minutes of fame.
On May 31, 1950, Paul A. Martin, Chairman of the Little Arlington Committee Dedication for the Day, he said something, and it challenged us to do a really good job in promoting this ceremony. He said, "They kept their pledge, my friends, but I wonder if we have kept our pledge. Today, we are continuing to keep that pledge made 69 years ago. We will never forget. I know I won't."
Well, thanks again to all who have served, and especially those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice for our wonderful country, and thank you for everybody to helping us, for everyone who are helping us remember them. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanna encourage everyone to make sure that they tell their friends and family about ceremony on Saturday. If you have not experienced it, it is a wonderful opportunity, so we encourage you to be part of that. Our next special ceremony?
We have a tribute in recognition of the Crystal Ray Fiesta 2019.
Councilmember Garza. If we could have the representatives from the Crystal Ray Fiesta. I see Father Thalen coming and some others. Oh, there's Guillermo. Hello? Mayor, did you wanna go down as well? All right, thank you. Yes, it's fine.
Okay, well, I have a resolution here, and I'm gonna read this. I think it's important. It's been part of our community for a long time, so... Whereas 2019 marks the 39th anniversary of the Crystal Ray Church Fiesta and the retirement of Father Fred Thalen, who provided 25 years of pastoral services at Crystal Ray Church, whereas Father Fred Thalen grew up in Fowler, Michigan, was ordained as a priest of the Diocese of Lansing September 20, 1980, and completed his Doctor of Ministry degree in 1988 from St. Mary's Seminary and University in Baltimore, Maryland. Whereas Father Fred began his ministry at Crystal Ray in 1993, and in 1998, the church moved from Washington Avenue to Miller Road, which made it possible to expand and increase the number and type of services it offered. Whereas the goal of Crystal Ray Church Fiesta is to bring the Lansing community together in friendship, faith, and cultural celebration, whereas the Crystal Ray Church Fiesta continues to present the best in traditional music, the most dazzling folkloric performances -- my daughters are dancing this year again -- the best traditional food, and a great mercado, which is the marketplace. The Crystal Ray Church Fiesta has become the largest Latino-cultural event in mid-Michigan, attracting more than 20,000 people to the three-day event traditionally held each year during the Memorial Day holiday weekend. The annual Fiesta serves as a primary fundraiser for Crystal Ray Church, which helps to provide programs and services to help the entire Lansing community. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Lansing City Council hereby wishes to congratulate Father Fred Thalen on his retirement and to thank him for many years of service. In addition, special thanks to the organizers of the 39th Annual Crystal Ray Church Fiesta. We hereby encourage the Lansing community to enjoy this celebration.
I'm gonna say a quick word.
Yes, go right ahead, Mayor.
So, I also, we have a tribute as well, one for the Fiesta and one for Father Fred, but we're gonna present it Friday night, but this is such a wonderful event, and everybody out there already knows that because you're all there. I love this event every year, and I've been going for so many years. I know everybody up here has been. It's my annual frustration, 'cause I go with my wife and my kids, and we eat incredible food, and my son gets the pizza. I'll never understand it. I'll never understand it. But it is truly just a wonderful celebration, and we love it, and we spend more money than we should, but that's good for the economy. So, but, thank you all for putting -- this takes so much work. I hear from Guillermo every year, and he tells me, and then I know we get to see all the, kinda the fruits of your labor, but it's always put on so well, and I can't wait to be there again this year. So, everybody's gotta come down. I'll be there Friday night, and probably over the weekend, too. So, thank you all.
And before Father Thalen makes his comments, you know, you can go right back up to the mic, that's fine, Father Thalen. Councilmember Garza moves the resolution. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, pose. You're now official. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is a surprise. Guillermo, you didn't tell me, and he said, but I appreciate it. It really means a lot to me, and yeah, pizza, well, it's a very multicultural experience when you come to a Fiesta, so it's right in tune there, so, but thank you very much. I really appreciate it, so...
Thank you, and I'd just like to acknowledge some of the people that are here with me. I'd like to acknowledge Joanne Villarreal, who is our executive assistant. We have Irma Rellano, who's our volunteer coordinator, and we have Ligia Romero, who is our buyer, Fiesta buyer. She spends all the money. But certainly, this Fiesta happens every year, and it's all because of people like them here and all the volunteers behind them. People were getting the food and the meat and the tortillas and the gorditas ready since last week, so there's many, many more volunteers from the church, and all the food is prepared, is prepared by parishioners. So, you will enjoy the food, the atmosphere, and we just hope that you come and have a good time. We expect you there. Oh, yeah, yes, yes, here it is. Here it is. This is the poster. Starts Friday. Doors open at 4:00 PM on Friday. We close at 11:00. Saturday, we go from 11:00 to 11:00, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And Sunday, we invite those of you who are of the Catholic faith, which just wanna come for a service. Our Mass starts at 11:00, and then we continue with the festival at around 1:30 with the Fiesta, and close at 7:00 PM. So, all of you are invited, and I wanna thank City Council for their support, as well as Mayor Shore for his support, and expect that we'll see all of you over there at some point in time. Thank you very much. We should have a poster for each one of the council folks.
Thank you. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
We are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Do we have council member comments? Councilmember Washington, councilmember Jackson, and councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. I just quickly want to announce that I have my constituent gathering the first Saturday of every month. However, we will not be having a gathering in June or July, and as we get closer to October, or, um, not October, August, I'll remind folks that we are having one, but once again, for June and July, we're taking it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson and councilmember Hussein.
Thank you. I just wanna invite everyone to the Fourth Ward's Monthly Constituent Contact Meeting. It's every fourth Saturday, so this happens to be the fourth Saturday coming up on May 25. It's at 10:00 at Gregory's Restaurant at 2510 North Martin Luther King. I also wanna thank Council President Wood, 'cause she covered for me last month and had a great conversation, and I knew as soon as she covered for me that my constituents were in good hands, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussein.
I just wanted to acknowledge a tremendous effort that took place on this past weekend. We built a playground at Beacon South, adjacent to Pleasant Grove and Homes, and I was just, I was blown away. I showed up at 8:30 at the Southside Community Coalition, and there must have been about 70 people that were there, ready to roll up their sleeves, get to work, and to really add on to, and I think Mayor Shore said it best when he spoke to the group, to really add on to what is becoming a destination park in southwest Lansing. I wanted to especially thank a few people. Kirsten Shiner from Jackson National Life, who actually organized the volunteer effort, Scott Dane from Capital Area Soccer League, and David Weiner from the Southside Community Coalition, who have meant pretty much everything to that field and to that playground just in general. The advocacy, the organization, they really have spearheaded the effort over there. There were a number of electeds on hand. Andy Shore was there, and pretty handy. I actually told my wife, I said, "He is pretty handy with a sock and wrench." It was pretty impressive. Sarah Anthony, our 68th House Representative, was there. Darrell Slaughter, our third, I think it's Third District, Ingham County Commissioner. We had Erica Poland, who is actually in the gallery today. She's our Third Ward Part Board Representative, and I believe she was there Saturday and Sunday. Sunday, there was an effort to actually spread mulch around the playground. And then Brian Jackson, I think he was ready to get his hands dirty, and then realized that we were working through about maybe a foot of mud throughout that area, but he did come in and support, so we appreciated him being there. If you get an opportunity, absolutely, you know, take the opportunity to drive by. Check out the playground, take your kids. It is just a fantastic playground, and I really believe that Saturday on full display was the pride that we have for our community. It was just very inspiring to be a part of. Also, there were a number of beautification and neighborhood cleanup events in southwest Lansing, and I wanted to recognize Avril Woods, the Lansing Eaton Neighborhood Organization, Churchill Downs, Colonial Village Neighbor Association, Colonial Cooperative, His Healing Hands Ministries, the Southwest Action Group, and just a myriad of others that did just some incredible things in southwest Lansing. It's kind of a, it was kind of a weekend of service that kinda took place, and I don't think southwest Lansing has ever been prettier and more vibrant than it is today. And then the last piece, June 8, from 10:00 to 12:00 noon, at the Alfreda Schmidt Southside Community Center, that's at 5825 Wise Road, we'll be having our Third Ward Constituent Contact Meeting. Again, that's from 10:00 to 12:00 noon. We will be recessing in July, so this is one of your last opportunities for a few months to come out, learn, provide input, et cetera, so we hope to see you there.
Thank you. Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanna give a quick plug to Lansing Gardens. They were graciously enough to donate all the flowers for the nine pots that you see along South Cedar Street. There's the red and white big cement pots, I think they're about four foot by four foot. So, they, let's see, May 5, they went and removed all the old flowers, and today, they went and planted them. So, it was Brad Durness from the South Baptist, I'm sorry, South Nazarene Church on Homes, and they are gonna take over that now. I know the Old Everett Neighborhood Group used to do it in the past, so now, South Baptist, South Nazarene Church is doing that now, so I wanna really give them a shout-out for that. Now, my Second Ward Constituent Contact Meeting, it's the second Saturday of every month, and it's from 1:00 to 3:00. This June, I will not be having my meeting with all the open houses, and there's three birthdays in my family, so we're gonna take the month of June off, and we will reconvene back in July. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there other council member comments? Seeing none.
Thank you. We are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience who has a community event, you can have up to a minute to give us the time, place, and purpose of the event.
Our Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries will be back at Evergreen Cemetery this coming Saturday, the 25th, from 10 until the flowers are gone. We did our geranium giveaway last Saturday. With the inclement weather, we did not get them all given away, so we have approximately half of them yet, so if you are interested, please stop by. Also, at that same day and in the same cemetery, we will be presenting a wreath during the Little Arlington Ceremony there in Evergreen Cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you. Other, any other community event announcements? Seeing none.
We're at the period where we're gonna stop letting people sign up for public comment on legislative matters, and just to make sure everyone's clear, legislative matters includes the public hearings. The items listed on the consent agenda and resolutions for action, that does include any comments on the city budget. That's the blue sign-in sheet, and you need to jump up right now if you still wanted to sign up. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
And Mayor Shore, before you make your comments, I did forget to announce that Rejuvenating South Lansing Meeting will be May 28, and we don't have another council meeting before then. There is a representative from the Attorney General's Office that's going to come and talk about scams and things to be concerned about, you know, with internet and those types of things, and that meeting is at 6:30 on Tuesday, the 28th, and that is located at the Alfreda Schmidt Southside Community Center in the Sandy Allen Room. Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Council President. First, I wanna talk about some of the great things that happened. Adam beat me to it on Beacon Field, but that was just a, Beacon Park, that was just a tremendous effort, and so I echo everything Adam said, except I left my blood, sweat, and tears there. I had a good upper body workout, and I came home with about this much mud on my shoes. So, I hosed it off, and I can't believe what I took away from Beacon Park, so thank you for that gift. It was intense. At the same time, we had Neighborhoods in Bloom, and I know several councilmembers already indicated that, but we gave away a lot of flowers. I was over in the West Side at The Point and at Rathburn's, and we were doing the flowerbeds and things, so that was a lot of fun, to be able to beautify our wonderful city. We have, I know Fiesta was already mentioned, so I don't need to talk about that coming this Friday. We have a Walking Wednesday on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, and we'll be at the Life O'Reilly property, and so we're walking that property and inviting people to join us to check that out and look at what the future could hold at Life O'Reilly. On Saturday, we talked about the Memorial Day Ceremony, so I will be there. Brigadier General Michael McDaniel will be there speaking, and that's always a wonderful event. And then the Wednesday after, I know we don't have council next week, so the Wednesday after, on Wednesday, the 29th, the Walking Wednesday will be at Fulton Park, so our Director of Parks and Rec will be there to talk about the hiking and mountain bike trails at Fulton Park in the Lansing Eaton neighborhood area. And then Thursday, May 23rd and Thursday, May 30th are the last two, the last two days for Serve Lansing, to pick up the free trash bags for your neighborhood litter cleanups. We've got over 100 neighbors already participating, so bags and T-shirts are available at our Neighborhoods office at the Foster Center. And then Thursday, May 30th at 6:00 PM, and Friday, May 31st at 8:00 AM, at the Foster Community Center, we have our Neighborhood Round Tables, where you can network with other neighborhood leaders and learn about other city resources. I also wanna recognize that we held a very wonderful and successful Love Lansing last week, where several neighborhood leaders were honored, and some of them won, and it was just a great evening. A lot of people enjoyed it, a lot of great local food and conversation. So, a busy last week and a busy upcoming week, but I feel like that's every week these days, so we look forward to it.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and we have two public hearings, as I indicated, that are part of that, Z1, 2018, and the re-adoption of the codified ordinances of the City of Lansing, as well as all of the items listed under the consent agenda and resolutions for action and ordinances for passage.
All right, with that, we'll start off with Councilmember Hussein and Vice President Spatafor.
Sure, so this is in consideration of Z8, 2018, 5400 South Cedar Street rezoning from F Commercial and J Parking Districts to G2 Wholesale District. The applicant in this case is U-Haul. They are asking for a rezone to allow for self-storage, truck sharing, and equipment leasing facility. The rezone request does include the entire lot to allow for two self-storage buildings and two outlots for future development closer to Cedar Street. There was some conversation, and you have to go a little bit back in your memory, we originally introduced and set the public hearing back in February, I think it was February 25, and the original public hearing was supposed to be later in March, I think toward the end of March. In any event, there were some conversations about potential for hybrid zoning in terms of this parcel of land. This ordinance would not do that. The public hearing was originally set, sorry, for March 25. The applicant, however, did ask for 60 days in order to engage the community, host open houses and such. If you recall back when we introduced and set the public hearing initially, the Realtor on behalf of Kmart spoke pretty disparagingly about south Lansing, and so I believe that is what precipitated the 60-day request. Planning Board in this case did recommend denial. I think it was a five-to-two vote. They referenced the fact that this was a spot zone. It conflicted with the master plan, and it would create or had the potential to create inconsistent land use patterns. The zoning administrator also recommended denial, and she added that Cedar Street, as constructed, is really meant for major commercial activity, and this does not fit that, does not fit that, sorry. We do have, if you look at your materials in your blue folder, we do have letters from Elaine Womboldt of Rejuvenating South Lansing. We have a letter from Nancy Malo from the East Side Neighbor Organization, and we also have a letter from Marilyn Irvine, who is a southeast Lansing resident and Neighbor Watch Coordinator, all recommending that we deny the rezone request.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Spatafor.
Tonight's public hearing is on, in consideration of re-adoption of the codified ordinances of the City of Lansing. Recall back to February last year, there was an issue where all of the ordinances of the city elapsed due to technical error or an overlooked part of code. This would re-codify the ordinances for 10 more years, eliminating the need to do that in the beginning of next year or in nine years, as the case may be, and the goal of the council is to do this on an annual basis, but this particular one is just for this year. So, it would re-codify and re-adopt the codified ordinances of the City of Lansing for 10 years.
All right, thank you, and I think what our plan is, is that during every budget cycle, when we do the budget, we will have a, as part of our policies, we will say that we're re-codifying the ordinances, so that we don't have that problem again. Anyone who is here to, that might have been here to speak on the assessments for the Red Cedar floodplain that was supposed to be on the agenda, we have an appropriation from the Townsend Ramp that will take care of that assessment, and so there will be no assessment to the residents or the businesses for that. So, if you're here and did not see that on the agenda, that is why. With that, we will go to our speakers.
Our first speaker is Steve Rawl, followed by Linda Keefe.
Good evening. My name's Steve Rawl. I live at 1608 West Chihuahua. We moved to Lansing in 1967. We were involved in, I wanna speak specifically to the Sustainability Coordinator, that's where I wanna get to, and in support of Brian Jackson's support for that. But we moved here, and in the 70s, we lived down the street from Fisher Body, and we fought the pollution. Some of you may remember that, and it was the citizens who came out and really organized and did a survey, and we had some success in reducing the pollution from there. In 2008, there was a group called, I forget what it was called, but we fought the proposal for a $2 billion coal plant that the Border and Light, Board of Water and Light was proposing. And we had... And we had numerous people speak to the board, and so the general manager selected his own citizen council, hopefully he gets some port to move ahead with this. And that citizen council called it a boondoggle. And so we stopped that. And in recent times, we've been trying to fight the gas plant. And I know in the mayor's plan for sustainability and moving Lansing to a more greener future, you're tied together with the Board of Water and Light, and they're proceeding with this giant gas plant, which they don't need, we don't need, we will be paying for it long after it's obsolete. So we need, like the missing jeopardy tonight, and the champion, he always says, "All in." We need to go all in on the environment. We've known since the 70s what climate disruption is going to do, and we've ignored it for decades. And now it's hitting us. They say we got 11, 12 years before we hit the tipping point where we can't turn back. So I just ask you to really go all in, and with your relationship with the Board of Water and Light and with, you know, what you're going to do with the city and with city buildings. We should have zero net energy buildings. We should have, you know, an electric fleet of cars. We have to go all in if we're going to really make an impact on what's happening to us. I mean, every week there are storms and tornadoes coming, and cause we have hurricanes. I mean, it's so obvious that we really need to work hard. We're in a desperate situation in terms of the climate. And our kids, my kids, you know, my grandson has to deal with this, and that's what we're leaving them. So I ask you to really consider hiring a sustainability coordinator, someone with professional ability to do this, because we're volunteers and we can't do it all. So I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks. Next, we have Linda Keefe, and then Loretta Stanaway.
I guess this will be kind of an extemporaneous speech, because I don't have anything prepared. This is very serious, and I know a lot of people on the council feel that it is, but we don't have the money. I think it's a point where it's not even the issue of money. We have to go forward and do something. In 89, I helped found a homeless advocacy organization, and that was 30 years ago, and we're obviously still struggling, and I think it's, it may be even worse than it, than it was in 1989. It probably is, because wages have stagnated. I just think it is so important to take action, hence the name Climate Action Plan. I'm sorry, are some of you tired of hearing, hearing this? I guess I'll just use my three minutes. You can just tell me when my time's up. It's, it's just serious. And there are six stages of moral development, Colberg's Six Stages of Moral Development. There's a small percentage of people at the, with the highest stage of moral development that would probably be concerned with a wide array of issues. And at the fourth level was our former president, Nixon. I just really think that an astute council like this can put their heads together to take some sort of action and possibly find some money, as Councilmember Spitzley mentioned, about a liaison. And thank you, Brian Jackson, for standing up for what's so important, because I really feel like if we don't have a planet, if we can't nurture our planet, I just feel like every other issue is moot. And I've been an advocate for low-income families my entire life. I've been a county commissioner in Ingham and Eaton Counties, and have always, but now it's the middle class, too. But now it's really all of us, because we need to protect this planet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway, and then Elaine Fishoff.
I just would like to second the opinions of the zoning board and the planning board, and recommend that you vote against the zoning request by U-Haul. I live on Armstrong, which is directly across from what was Kmart, and this is not what our neighborhood or our citizens envisioned for that place. We would like to see something in there that serves the whole community, if it's possible. Something may be recreational, something may be educational, something may be service-oriented, not necessarily just another business wanting to drain money from the residents. A lot of times, you'll hear somebody say, "Well, something is better than nothing. It's sitting there vacant now. It's not generating any income. It's not generating any proper taxes." But I would submit that something better than nothing prohibits getting a better something, and we would like to hold out for a better something. Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta.
Thank you. Next is Elaine Fishoff, and then Ben Bakken.
I'd just like to support the comments made by the first two speakers, and thank Councilmember Jackson for his strong and prolonged advocacy in, in favor of creating the position of a sustainability energy coordinator or manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ben Bakken, and then Brian Loeffler.
Good evening.
Do I need to lean down a little bit?
[laughing]
My name is Ben Bakken. I've served as the Chair of the Lansing Financial Health Team since 2014. Want to bring everyone back a little bit in terms of our formation, where we've been, and now where we're going. The Financial Health Team was formed in 2012 by former Mayor David Hollister, and in 2013, released a comprehensive report with a long list of recommendations for the city to consider at a time when it was facing significant budget deficit. Many of those were adopted, and the Financial Health Team continued to work and continued to be focused. In 2016, we engaged studies from a professional firm called Siegel, who provided both pension and retiree healthcare reports. We then issued a letter in, the end of 2017, with some focal recommendations out of those. Last year, in 2018, we welcomed some new members to the Financial Health Team upon the recommendation of Mayor Shore. And quite honestly, last year was largely spent focused on what was PA 202, which, understand the state's reason for that, but for a city like Lansing, who was already investing significant time and energy into addressing the pension and OPEB obligations, it was, quite honestly, a distraction and a waste of time. We continue to stay involved, and I would say this year, we're at a point of very high momentum with the Financial Health Team, and I wanted to thank all of you for your attention to our work. I also want to thank Mayor Shore for his comments during his State of the City address earlier this year, where he brought, made some comments and brought attention to these, these long-term legacy costs. We had a very active Committee of the Whole meeting back at the end of April, and then a couple weeks later, last Monday, submitted an updated letter including recommendations for a Chief Restructure Officer or Chief Strategy Officer. I just wanted to take a minute to thank all members of council for including a Chief Strategy Officer in this year's budget, and doing that under short order. The Financial Health Team thinks it's very important to bring in that kind of additional expertise based on the complexity of these issues, and also help with the execution of some of those concepts. So just wanted to appreciate everyone. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the mayor's staff, and also to members of city council for taking that step. I think it's a very important point. I will add, I talked to David Hollister today, shared with him where we are, were, and some of the conversations that we've had. He feels very positive and energized as well, and wanted to pass my thanks along also on behalf of him. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brian Loeffler, and then Bobby Fulmer.
Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you, Mayor and others. I want to compliment Ben Bakken and other members of the Financial Health Team, and also your efforts to essentially take this up real in short order, since the letter was released to you last week. But as you know, you've been working on this. Last fall, your comprehensive action plan that this council adopted incorporated a lot of the things that the Financial Health Team has done over the past few years. Furthermore, the Michigan Stability Board actually had a meeting today. Please note that Lansing was on the top 10 list of having some of the largest liabilities. It's essentially, the whole concept of Act 202 was really about transparency, that there's reporting, that there's light on a topic that we all have to address, and we can't ignore. I mean, there's a lot of competing factors here, but at the same time, there's, we've just got to start the conversation, how to work forward towards the end. And with that, I think the Financial Health Team is really a great group of individuals that are essentially volunteers, that are essentially giving a lot of time and talent to the city and love the city. And I think that we really appreciate today that you're going to essentially look at funding a position to essentially not only look at government in a silo, but essentially holistically to solve this issue for not only their employees, but also all their retirees. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Bobby Fulmer, and then Marshall Clabow.
Hi, my name is Bobby. I currently bought a house over 10 years ago here in Lansing. It butts up to the Kmart property that is now pretty depraved. I currently went to the U-Haul meeting that they had open to the public. I looked at what they had, how they're going to revitalize that area and bring it back to where I bought my house. After I moved into my house, they currently put a bike trail there, a walk path that I used on a regular basis, where I could walk my dog. Now that that area has, the building is vacant, I feel that that is not a safe area for me to walk and, and go on and use on a daily basis. After I went to the meeting, I did see what U-Haul has in store and planned for the revitalization of that area, and I feel that it would bring a lot back to my neighborhood for what they have planned. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then finally is Marshall Clabow.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name's Marshall Clabow, Fourth Ward resident, live in Rivendell Cooperative House. I'm here to speak on behalf of the budget, and really, in regards to Councilmember Washington's comment, we do need to act responsibly in regards to sustainability. And this budget does not act responsibly. We have a climate crisis that's going on, and this plan, this budget fails through and through to identify, mitigate, and really react to the crisis. Countries across the world are declaring climate emergencies. Britain, Ireland, cities are committing to plans. We committed to 100% plan, but I'm really worried about that as well. Seems like a perfect fox in the henhouse type situation. We had the executive branch of this leadership, kind of go behind the back of everyone else, make a deal with one member of our utility, BWL, who's acting rather recklessly economically, environmentally, with our health, with this gas plant. This $200,000 commitment to go 100% renewable, it's not even really going 100% renewable. You're buying credits that may be in Iowa, Oklahoma, big giant wind farms. That really is not affecting Lansing at all. $200,000 can be spent a lot more wisely in a fight against climate crisis. Three examples of that would be follow the pilot program that Chicago's enacted, Climate Corps program, similar to AmeriCorps. Councilmember President Wood, you're a leader in the senior corps. I know we have the members here in town to do a Climate Corps. That's a great first step. Hiring a community energy manager would be a great step. To Councilmember Hussein's comment about having a Climate Action Plan, we don't have one. I've never seen you at a meeting, but the last two years, we've been working on one on a volunteer ad hoc basis. That's not going to cut it. We took good steps to get the base line information, not all the way there. And quite frankly, it's kind of a slap in the face to environmentalists to engage in this sort of $200,000 commitment with BWL. BWL, time and time again, has proven their inadequate leadership in these issues. I have now been stonewalled by four different individuals of the Board of Water and Light to receive their energy power mix. As a rate payer in a municipal-owned utility, I deserve that information to know how our energy is being generated. They, quite frankly, won't send it to me. That's troublesome. I can't locate the information online, because they've filed with FERC, who is the national regulatory for our overall grid. They've blocked FERC from releasing that information on basis that I don't believe to be true. But I would like to see you all as elected officials, you were elected to serve and protect your constituents, to reject this budget, because it fails to meet the climate crisis, and that's my stance, and I hope you follow along. Thank you, Representative Jackson, for your leadership. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker. So we are to the referral of the public hearings, number one, Z-8 2018.
That will go back to development and planning.
And number two, the readoption of the codified ordinances.
We'll be voting on that this evening.
Okay, then we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, item one has already been voted on by the committee, so I remove items two and three from the consent agenda.
All right. So we have no items on the consent agenda.
So where do the Committee on General Services?
Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is a resolution that will grant a waiver of the noise ordinance as it relates to the construction noise for the resurfacing of a portion of Mount Hope Avenue from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., sometime between June 1st and August 30th, and also for an ordinance as it relates to construction noise for the resurfacing on Capitol Avenue on Saturdays and Sundays from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. between June 1st and August 30th, although it's not anticipated that it'll take the entire three months. Our construction season is short, therefore, we're asking for it for the entire time, and so that we can get this finished. So with that, I would move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
We are to the Committee of the Whole.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the resolution for the annual consolidation strategy and plan submission for an action plan proposed budget for the Community Development Block Grant, otherwise known as CDBG, for fund resources for fiscal year '20. We've heard quite a bit about this through Committee of the Whole process, and we are now on final approval.
We have a motion before us, and again, this, we received the figures from the federal government. We had to make some changes to our action plan based on those numbers, but those were reviewed at the last Committee of the Whole meeting. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none? All those in favor of the Community Development Block Grant budget say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Okay. Vice President Spatafor, we're now to the budget.
Madam President, we need to divide the question on the budget?
First, are you going to give an explanation?
No.
[laughing]
So over the past few months, the city council has entered, held several meetings, several budget hearings, two out in the community, one in the South Side, one in the East Side, to discuss the mayor's proposed budget, which spends $139.5 million on essential city services, from police and fire to cemeteries to roads and sidewalk repair, to finance department operations, to the city council's budget, to keeping the lights on. There were a number of proposals that were new, but many, many things that continued city government operations that we're very used to. We talked a lot about some of those new proposals, a lot of the existing proposals, and the mayor was a partner with the council, I think, in working to find some solutions to some of our concerns and some of the amendments that we proposed. This evening in Committee of the Whole, we did work together to reduce some line items, namely the energy some line items, namely, the Energy Greenwise proposal, $104,000, the Neighborhood Development or Neighborhood and Citizen Engagement Department by $60,000, the facade improvement grants by $12,500, the Arts and Culture Grants by $12,500, and the Sister Cities Commission by $5,000, to put that money into the mayor's office to work to contract with or hire a chief strategy officer tasked with looking at the city's financial assets and efficiencies to make recommendations to the council and the mayor on ways we can reduce liabilities and obligations from a monetary perspective so that we can dedicate more revenues to the city services. That was approved in the process. So, what we have this evening is the final 2019-2020 budget for council's final approval.
We have a motion on the budget. Are there any questions or concerns? Councilmember Hussein.
This be the appropriate time to make an amendment to the resolution that came out of Committee of the Whole?
Yes, you may.
Okay. I'm going to be honest with you. I think the conversations were so good in Committee of the Whole and so rich, I just simply overlooked this. When we talk about being responsive, and you did a fantastic job, I think, outlining the public process that took place to actually vet the recommended budget from the executive branch. In any event, we heard a lot, a lot, a lot about the $50,000 for Wi-Fi in the parks, in the Parks Millage allocation. And again, in being responsive and making sure that we, as a body, understand that these are, that these are decisions, in my opinion, that we should be looking to those that we represent for. I would like to amend in this way. What I'd like to do is to move the $50,000 for Wi-Fi under the Parks Millage allocations, and I'd like to move that toward ADA accessibility in parks. And one of the reasons is that we have a very robust park system. 114 parks, we have some 16 miles of trail, we have four community centers. But unfortunately, a large percentage of that park system simply is not accessible for folks that are living with disabilities. And I really do believe that we need to take the lead when we talk about inclusion and ensuring that our community is accessible to those living with disabilities. So, again, in being responsive to what I heard, it was overwhelming in terms of people not understanding why we would consider $50,000 for Wi-Fi in the parks. I did not feel that we got any compelling information during the budget process, and so for that reason, I would move the amendment.
All right, we have a motion on the amendment. Are there any questions on this amendment? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Two things. First, I won't support it because it's within the budget that doesn't contain a sustainability manager or any green initiative. But in the, also, so, to support ADA accessible area or park, so $50,000 might get the curb cut or a single piece of equipment. However, if you have five parks that all of a sudden gain Wi-Fi ability, the average, or one person who's, you know, maybe mobily challenged, now they can go to a park and at least have their Wi-Fi there at any location. So, I think that would actually serve more of that population than a $50,000 would because it's, again, just from hearing some of the conversations on prices, that really doesn't get much, and it would definitely only touch one part of one park instead of five entire parks where more people can do more things there, including people who would need to use ADA accessibility. But for the first reason, because it doesn't contain any green initiatives or sustainability efforts, I won't support it.
Thank you. We have Councilmember Garza, then Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. I will support the amendment. From what I talked to and what I gathered from the community is, when you go to the park, you're supposed to disconnect. You're not supposed to be out there on your Wi-Fi or your laptop. You're supposed to be spending that quality time with your kid or whoever it may be. So, I haven't heard anybody in support of this $50,000, so I appreciate you bringing this in front of us, Mr. Hussein, and I will support your amendment.
Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. I will support this amendment because the time I spent on the Committee for Diversity, one group that we consistently forget are those with mobility issues. And it never, excuse me, I was never quite aware of what an issue this is. It's really nice to have picnic areas, but if your grandmother in a wheelchair can't get to the picnic area, she cannot participate. And it doesn't take that much. And maybe it's not a whole lot of money, but it shows we're going, we're including an entire portion of our population that is frequently forgotten. And this is why I was so adamant about more money in sidewalk repairs is because we do have a lot of people with mobility issues. And each and every one of us is aging. Each and every one of us has the possibility of becoming mobily challenged. And I think if there's a way we can help children, elderly, or disabled get to our parks, use our parks, even if it's a wheelchair accessible picnic table, I think it's incredibly important, much more so than Wi-Fi in the park. I've never had any problems using the Wi-Fi on my phone in any park, so I'm not sure what the issue is. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I think mobility in the parks, you know, is critically, critically important. What's more important, I believe, is the sidewalk repair. And, you know, just having people get out and get to the bus or get to wherever they are, and our sidewalks are critically in need of repair. For me, you know, I'm not quite sure $50,000 cuts it. And this is something where I believe that the chief strategy officer or whomever needs to take a deep dive into the parks program. I think it should be a priority, no question, 100%. But if we're going to do it, let's do it. And let's have somebody look at it. Let's have somebody figure out how much it's going to cost in total to do one park, two parks, or whatever we need to do to make it mobile. So, at this point, I will not be supporting moving just the $50,000. I do support us at some point having a look at this because I do think we need to do it. I think we need to make sure that our parks are accessible to all, but I don't think $50,000 is enough. We need to have a study done. You know, we get back to all of these of what's our return on investment and how much is this going to cost. And so, we need to make sure that we're looking at these things clinically and financially and holistically. And so, I would hopefully see some recommendations come up next year for how much is this going to cost and a plan to implement it. Thank you.
Vice President Spatafor, then Councilmember Hussein.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to say, I think ADA accessibility in our parks is, has to be a priority for this city. And I know in conversations with the Parks Director, he's made it very clear that it is. And it is an expensive endeavor, and that's a cost we should be looking at. I would rather see us talk to the Parks Director and have a plan for how we can do this with a strategy, and perhaps look at some of the dollars that we are going to receive from the red cedar sale to implement a citywide strategic plan toward ADA accessibility. I also, I was dubious of this Wi-Fi in the park situation because I see Pokemon Go going on around, and I wonder why that's still a thing. But then, when I heard the IT presentation about what the Wi-Fi in the parks was actually geared toward, and it's toward high-speed internet-type things to improve our smart city infrastructure, including the $250,000 that the mayor appropriated in the Townsend ramp sale for security cameras, the security camera upgrades around the city. It's not just about your laptop or your cellphone. This is about critical city infrastructure. So, I am very supportive of the intent behind Councilmember Hussein's amendment, but I would respectfully disagree, and I'll be voting no on it, and hope that we can come together on a more comprehensive plan.
Councilmember Hussein.
Just very quickly, I want to recognize that $50,000 will not fix the problem. I think what it does is it demonstrates a commitment, and I think we can grow that commitment in years to come, much like we did with the Small Business Facade Program when we created kind of a placeholder of sorts a few fiscal years ago. With that being said, I also want to recognize the fact that this was not necessarily something that was born from my own mind. This was something that was born from the very public process that we engaged in. This millage is, we're on a five-year renewal cycle, and I really think it would behoove this body to listen to the people that will be out voting for renewal. And so, that is why I am bringing this amendment forward. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion before us. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, posed. There isn't enough to carry. Are there any other amendments or concerns on the budget? I thought I saw Councilmember Jackson's hand before. Yes, no?
Well, I guess I would renew my amendment to include money to fund a sustainability manager after being aware of the climate crisis and speaking with the experts, including our local experts, Tom Stanton and Terry Link, who suggested this, and then just seeing the creativity just to find some money for certain things, including even your last comment about the appearance or just to get the ball rolling to show, I think this is a top priority. I encourage everybody to Google search the International Commission on Climate Change's 1.5 report. It's very eye-opening. And again, the job that's being created, I believe pensions is also a top priority, and I was for the corrective action plan to get that rolling. But again, the mayor came with Greenwise money for a green initiative that the council vetted and decided it didn't want to go with. But then, that money that was originally for green and sustainability projects is gone to other things. And I'll just finish my thing, and I won't talk anymore. So, a sustainability director is responsible for managing, coordinating, facilitating, and advising the development, implementation, monitoring, and improvement of local government policies and programs and initiatives that promote the local environmental, energy, economic, and social sustainability. I would argue that this new position from the Financial Health Team would be covered in a sustainability manager because it also is trying to find efficiencies with, in the economic field. So, you know, there's always arguments, the time is now, is the mayor's slogan, but, you know, council and other people, you know, it's just not a top priority. And I mentioned our council advocated very strongly for the other priorities, fire, police, pension, those are all duly important, but I think it's also equally, if not more important, to just think about our long-term and immediate future. I'd also want to add that this is really a savings move. Finding efficiencies and streamlining processes is cost-saving in the long run, and I think that's something that we also overlook. A sustainability manager could also bring us into the next level as far as finding the grants and implementing all these ideas. And when the climate action plan, excuse me, when the data comes out and says we need to do all these things, we're still going to need somebody to help us do all these things, just like we apparently need somebody in the Financial Health Team to tell us where to save money and what to do on that. So, I can't support the budget if it doesn't include any of that, and my amendments to try to include that were brought down, so I'll just be voting no. Thank you.
Just so I understand you clearly, you're not making an amendment?
I'm sorry. I would like to renew my amendment to, okay, so $60,000 from the vacant law position plus a total of $60,000 divided by each department equally proportionate to their budget. So, that's probably a couple thousand here and there to equal 60. Might not even miss it.
Okay. We have a motion before us. Are there any other comments on the motion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Nay. The motion fails. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, what I'd like to do is pass the gavel, just ceremonially pass the gavel, okay?
Madam President.
I move to divide the question and to pull out the HRCS budget and vote on that separately.
It's been moved by Councilmember Wood to divide the question and vote separately on the HRCS budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Councilmember Spitzley, and then Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to divide the budget as it pertains to economic development. I'll vote on that separately.
We have a motion to pull out the economic development budget and vote on that separately. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to divide the budget to remove 54A District Court.
I have a motion to remove 54A District Court, vote on that separately. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. I'd like to pass the gavel.
Thank you, Madam President. We need a motion to approve the, I'm sorry, Madam President.
I would like to recuse myself on the voting on the HRCS budget. If you did that first.
Very good. So, we need a motion to approve the HRCS budget.
It first recues, my recusal. Yeah.
Sorry. We need a motion, it's been moved by Councilmember Wood to recuse herself from the HRCS budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Now, we need a motion to approve the HRCS budget. Councilmember Washington.
I move that we approve the HRCS budget.
It's been moved by Councilmember Washington that we approve the HRCS budget for fiscal year 1920. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries five to one with one abstention.
Thank you. I have the gavel back, and Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to recuse myself from the budget vote for economic development and planning.
I have a motion for recusal. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. At this time, we have a motion by Vice President Spatafor for the, for the economic development.
Madam President, I move the adoption of the fiscal year 1920 budget for the Economic Development, Economic Development and Planning Department.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of the economic development budget, say aye. Aye, pose. We have five ayes, one no, and one abstention. And Councilmember Jackson.
I move to recuse myself from the 54A District Court budget vote.
We have a motion on the budget, on the recusal. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, posed, passes unanimously. Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the approval of the fiscal year 1920 budget for the 54A District Court.
I have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, posed, passes, passes five with one abstention, six, sorry. Six to zero with one abstention. I'll get it out yet. All right. Now, we have the final, the remainder of the budget. Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the adoption of the remainder of the fiscal year 1920 budget.
We have a motion. Are there any other questions or concerns? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I would just want to add that there's a lot of citizens who went to the participatory budget, including the off-site budgets and spoke today that are in favor of, you know, a sustainability manager. I would say even more so than was against the Wi-Fi, but, you know, it depends on where you were, who you talked to. But I just want to at least just comment and commend the citizens who, you know, are also pushing and moving forward. And you heard, there is a lot of, you know, good conversation starters or promises about a future date, but hopefully, we'll see some of that come to fruition. So, thank you.
Vice President Spatafor.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody. Today, we have a budget before us that invests in key priorities for our community. It makes a strong commitment to public safety. This budget invests record numbers in infrastructure repair and replacement, namely, our neighborhood sidewalks. This budget looks at not only the big flashy items, but the items that don't grab headlines but nevertheless improve the quality of life for thousands of Lansing's residents. This budget includes over $150,000 of dedicated revenue to reducing our carbon footprint and streamlining city operations to help combat the dramatic effects of climate change and show that Lansing is committed to protecting our environment and natural resources. In addition to all that, the many great programs, this budget funds the creation of a chief strategy officer who will identify efficiencies and cost-saving strategies with a particular focus
focus on addressing the city's growing unfunded actuarial accrued liabilities. The overall goal of the CSO's work would be to put the city on a stable financial path to better deliver services to Lansing residents. I personally see the crushing obligations created by unfunded liabilities as the single largest deterrent to a safer, more prosperous Lansing, and the chief strategy officer will help the mayor and council address these liabilities so the future budgets can make deeper investments in essential city services. I really appreciate everyone's willingness to work together to develop this budget collaboratively, and I appreciate the so many residents who reached out to the council as a whole, and myself included, to talk about the budget. So thank you very much for that indulgence.
Thank you. Are there any other council comments? I just want to thank everyone up here for going through the budget process, for their research, for the work that they've done, for listening to the community, to trying to work together to come up with issues and items that we heard from the public, whether it was here in the chambers, whether it was out when we did our budget presentations, out on the road, whether it was at your constituent meetings and bringing them back here and trying to come up with some strategies that work. I know that each one of us, I'm sure, walking away tonight, there are some things we wish that we would be able to make changes on and/or have that we don't have or that we didn't make changes on, but I think we've all compromised in a way that is best for the city. The idea that we have put into our budget policies utilizing $175,300 of non-general fund money to help reduce the city's emissions and outputs and increase energy efficiencies might not be a position, but at least it's a start in the right direction. The fact that we have funded a position for a chief strategy officer also is getting to the issues that we have heard over and over again about the stability of our community. Adding a police officer, code-compliance officer, those items that make a difference in our neighborhoods each and every day. I just want to thank you as a council, thank the administration for the work that they've done, all the departments that have come before us, especially the work that our internal auditor has done in putting pivot tables together and being able to look at those and bring us that information as well as pertinent questions as he looked at the budget. So with that, this, okay, Councilmember Washington.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. Also, thank you, everybody. None of this has been personal. We're just doing our job. Budget season is exhausting, and I'm glad it's over.
Thank you. All right, with that, a roll call vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Six ayes, one nays, the resolution is adopted.
Okay. Thank you very much. That takes us on. We are still in committee of the whole, and this is to the supplemental.
It's a resolution.
We are still, yeah, no, 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 no. We're still, we're still in action items for committee of the whole. Vice President Spatafor.
I move to adjourn committee of the whole. No. So, but we have now before us a resolution appropriating, it's a supplemental appropriation appropriating the funds for the Townsend, the sale of the Townsend ramp. I'll go through this real quickly. Recall that we were paid nearly $18 million for the Townsend parking ramp by the state of Michigan. 12.027 million of that was used to pay off outstanding debt on the ramp. $900,000 was given to the parking fund for past state parking arrears. Great. And then the supplemental before us actually is a combination of some work that we've done with the mayor and the council to rework some of the numbers, namely removing $500,000 for a citywide paperless initiative, putting $181,500 into that, to the Red Cedar floodplain remapping project, saving residents and business owners the assessment that would be placed on their homes and businesses, and then moving an additional $318,500 to sidewalk repairs. This leaves $2.17 million to remain unappropriated. The rest of it goes into fire department self-contained breathing apparatuses for $112,000. The SWAC renovations for the fire department at $100,000. The citywide public safety camera replacement program for $250,000. A replacement of the city website for $100,000. $80,000 for a customer relationship management software for the city. City survey software for $100,000. An interactive voice response system for $330,000. Digital signage for city announcements for employees in the city without computers, that's $30,000. Human resource applicant tracking software for $50,000. Real-time crime center software for $300,000. For all those capital fund projects, it's $1.952 million. Additionally, the resolution would appropriate $460,000 for the purchase of two fire engine, I'm sorry, two ambulances, and $470,000 for the purchase of one fire engine.
I have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? No, we adopted it in committee of the whole. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to ordinances for passage. We have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, readopting the codified ordinances of the city of Lansing is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the committee of the whole and is on the order of immediate passage.
Vice President Spatafor.
The ordinance, I move the ordinance before us, readopting the codified ordinances of the city of Lansing. As was discussed in our public hearing, this would readopt in the codified ordinances for 10 years with the city of Lansing to avoid them coming out of codification.
All right, we have a motion before us. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted.
Councilmember Spatafor, you're asking for immediate effect.
How'd you read my mind like that? I would like to move for immediate effect.
I have a motion for immediate effect. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you.
We are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow sheet in the back. We'll give you about another three or four seconds to jump up and make yourself known to Nathan, and with that, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Spatafor again.
Madam President, I move that all items be considered as being read in full and that proper referrals be made by you.
I have a motion before us. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously.
We have letters from the city clerk regarding minutes of boards, commissions, and authorities.
Placed on file.
Fireworks display license, Great Lakes fireworks, for the city of Lansing's Independence Day celebration.
General services.
Letters from the mayor regarding grant acceptance, Michigan Department of Environmental Quality Scrap Tire Grant.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
Special assessments, snow and ice removal for winter 2018, 2019.
Public Service Committee.
Grant acceptance, JAG grant for technology and equipment.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
Reappointments, Jason Wilks as an at-large member, various reappointments that are listed in the agenda.
And that's going to Cow, Committee of the Whole, excuse me.
Communications and petitions, communication from Tammy Aron regarding fireworks.
General Services.
And notice from the Liquor Control Commission to transfer an SDM license at 1700 South Washington Avenue.
General Services.
We are to motion of excused absence.
We have a motion by Councilmember Washington for excuse the absence for Councilmember Dunbar. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, passes.
We are to remarks by councilmembers.
Are there any closing remarks by councilmembers? Seeing none.
Remarks by the mayor.
By the mayor.
I want to thank you all once again for the work you did on the budget. I agree with the council president and everyone else. I think we all worked really hard. As Councilmember Washington has told me several times, this is not personal, this is something that we do because we think we make the best decisions based on what we hear, and I think Councilman Hussein has said that also, but you all worked really hard, and I know we worked really hard. I know Angie worked really hard and Samantha. So my staff, I thank them for all the hard work they've done on the budget, and I do thank all of you. I also want to mention, it didn't really get said, but we passed the Townsend ramp appropriation, and that's a lot of money for a lot of equipment and a lot of things we really need. We're going to get, you know, more functional cameras for our police officers. We're starting down the path of a real-time crime center. We're getting new fire engines and ambulances. I mean, I was almost more excited about that. We're going to, you know, get the assessment taken care of, where people are going to have less, have less people in the floodplain, and yet they're not going to get billed for it. So today, we're going to get out maybe earlier than other days, but I think we did some very significant work this evening, and I hope that the people who are watching recognize that while it was very quick votes at city council, maybe not at committee of the whole, but city council, there were some very significant efforts that were passed this evening, not just the budget, but the Townsend ramp, and I expect that the city of Lansing is going to see a whole lot of improvements as a result, so I'm really excited about it, and I thank you all.
Okay.
Okay, we are to public comments on city government-related matters. We have Laura to stand away and then Robert Gray.
Serene and secluded and silent and shaded and sheltered, that is what the Scott Garden, Sunken Garden was. It is no longer any of those. Instead, it is stark and sunny, surrounded by parking lot and pathways, shadeless and sound-drenched. It will be surrounded on all four sides within five feet of its walls by pathways. We have lost historic sedums and heritage peonies, all the mature woody trees and shrubs and the pond grasses, much more than the 1% of original plantings the Board of Water and Light has acknowledged as lost in the transfer. Now new plant material is going in, and the remaining historic plants are still in the ground at Cooley Gardens in Two Beds. This is not what we were promised, but we shouldn't be surprised, I suppose, based on the past practices by the Board of Water and Light. What I'm asking today is for you as a council to look into this, to find out where the Board of Water and Light is, where the bid was for the plant materials, where the money for the plant materials came from, what will happen to the original historic plants that are remaining, and how they say at this point in time they still intend to put those plants in the garden when the garden is nearly full already. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Robert Gray.
First of all, I'd like to find out and ask who is responsible for moving every council member's emails off the list. You can't even, I couldn't, I don't know how I got ahold of Jeremy, other than, it was through Jody, and I ran it to her at Myers. How am I supposed to get ahold of anybody or talk to anybody? It was always accessible, and now they have no email address, nothing, just their name. I want them back on there so I could talk to people. It's ridiculous. Rages. No city personnel should receive any rages at all until, we still got our priorities straight. We don't have a priority straight in the city at all. If I can't live on $128,000 a year, you know, I don't even make that kind of money. So, it's wrong. It's entirely wrong. I just don't see that. Bike pass. We spend all this money on bike pass, priority. What about our roads? All our money goes every place else but to the roads. Lottery, the casinos, registration vehicles, gas tax, you tell me where that money has went. I think there'd be an audit in the city, the state, and the whole federal government of where that money's gone, because it sure has not gone for anybody in here as far as a citizen goes, not to our roads. They're terrible. Sidewalks, I give some pictures to Mr. Garza on two sidewalks in my area. Seventeen years they've been like that. We can't take that tree down, it costs too much money. So you put a Band-Aid on it, and there it sits. No, fix the problem. You can't fix the problem with a Band-Aid. It don't work that way. You want to go have open-heart surgery and have them put a Band-Aid on you? They didn't do that with me, they stapled me. They didn't put a Band-Aid on it, I probably would have died if they did. You know, and Board of Water and Light, the beavers came through our neighborhood and chopped the hell out of all of our trees, just mutilated them, and Garza's got some pictures of that, too. They left all the wood there. Responsibility? The homeowner. That's wrong. You're going to cut the trees down, for God's sakes, because of the high wires, which some of them do need, and I do not object to that period, but if you're going to take the whole face of a pine tree off and leave the other half there, it looks like hell. It's terrible. What does that do to the homeowner's value of their home? It takes it down. Who wants to live in a place like that?
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Is that it? Councilmember Garza, if you could make sure that Mr. Gray has all the cards of council members that are up there. I think he might have some of our older addresses, and that's why he's not able to get through to us. And I do know when we had a problem in Colonial Village with them picking up the wood, getting in touch with Mr. Pefley, he will make sure that that wood gets picked up. Yes, Councilmember Garza?
Thank you. And what I think Mr. Robert Gray is saying is that he can't find any of our emails online, so on the city website, so I appreciate you bringing him to that.
All right, well, then I will make sure, they should be under our council page, and if they're not there, we'll make sure that those are taken care of.
Yeah, he presented me with some pictures this evening, and I will be getting ahold of Dick Pefley to...
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we want to wish everybody a happy Memorial Day, and we are adjourned.